The Atlanta City Council adopts legislation authorizing the transfer of funds from the District 12, 1, 11, and 4's Consulting Professional Services account, our participatory Budget Pilot Program funds, in a total amount not to exceed $175,000 to the Atlanta Police Foundation for the purchase of security cameras within the respective districts. The council approves a resolution condemning hate and extremism and affirming the city of Atlanta's ongoing commitment to cultivating an inclusive, safe, and just society and culture that values the diversity of the city's community, works to ensure equitable opportunities in all major facets of society, and celebrates both individuality and commonality. The council says yes to a resolution requesting three council committees conduct a feasibility study and gather recommendations for the establishment of the Department of Public Safety and Wellness in Atlanta. The council's Public Safety and Legal Administration, Community Development and Human Services, and Finance Executive Committees would be tasked with examining the creation of the new department and holding at least two work sessions with community partners, experts in public safety, and members of the public for feedback. The council greenlights a resolution requesting the city's chief operating officer to work with the Department of City Planning, Invest Atlanta, Atlanta Belt Line Incorporated, Atlanta Housing, and the Atlanta Fulton County Land Bank to create a comprehensive, action-based plan to expedite the development of affordable workforce and supportive housing on vacant, publicly-owned land. For more recently-approved legislation, please visit our website, citycouncil atlantaga.gov. This has been your Atlanta City Council Legislative Minute.
Welcome to Stay at Home Connect. Coronavirus cases continue to place a burden on our healthcare systems. Georgia hospitals approaching 85% capacity of inpatient beds and 91% capacity of ICU beds. The incoming Biden-Harris administration pushing for a major expansion of federal funding in order to manifest his goal of administering 100 million COVID vaccinations within the first 100 days of his presidency. Two additional vaccine candidates are working to join Moderna and Pfizer in the fight against COVID. Officials with Johnson &amp; Johnson say the interim portion of its Phase 3 clinical trials involving 45,000 people revealed the vaccine was "generally well tolerated." As for the Oxford-AstraZeneca offering, data from four clinical trials indicate moderate efficacy. Dr. Anthony Fauci says both vaccine candidates could be weeks away from evaluation from the FDA. With over 100 cases of the UK variant currently in the US, officials with the CDC say it's projected to grow rapidly and could become the predominant strain by March. This variant is said to be more contagious, but so far, there's no proof that the variant will lead to greater illness or more deaths. With an eye on this variant and others that are emerging, the agency has also expanded its requirement for a negative COVID test to all air travelers entering the United States. In addition to current CDC recommendations, air passengers will need to get a viral test for current infection within three days of their flight and provide written documentation to the airline. For specifics on the COVID-19 test requirement, you can go to the CDC's website at cdc.gov. The Internal Revenue Service's tax filing season begins February 12th. This date will allow the agency time to do additional programming and test its systems following tax law changes, which led to a second round of economic impact payments due to COVID-19. The IRS says if you want a speedy refund, you will want to file your returns electronically with direct deposit. You can also file your taxes with tax software companies. That includes IRS Free File Partners. These partners are accepting tax returns now, and they will be sent to the IRS starting February 12th. Atlanta City Council member Andre Boone joins with Atlanta Police Leadership Institute, Badge to Family Outreach, Georgia Stand Up, and a group of volunteers for a cleanup of the Martin Luther King Drive corridor in recognition of the King holiday.
We want to make sure that the citizens know that we are here today. We're here to help them keep their environment clean. We're going to be picking up trash. We'll be painting graffiti. We will be cleaning up many of the cracks and crevices that folks miss when they do normal cleanups. We've done a lot of work just to plan out this community cleanup.
Atlanta City Council member Nadeline Archibong celebrates Martin Luther King Junior Day by co-sponsoring a community coat drive.
This is another example of the love and care that we have for one another. We're in a pandemic, and there's a lot of need out there. There's a lot of fear. And so, this is one of those ways that we give back and share with our community. Commissioner Johnson is here with us as well. So, this is an initiative that's Atlanta and the county. We're partnering with Workforce Strong, 258, and other, the YMCA, of course, to make sure that families in this area have winter coats for themselves and their children.
That's a wrap. We'll see you on the next edition of Stay at Home Connect.
Some of these individuals, these young men, 20 years old, facing 77 years aggravated assault and having a weapon in their hand, and some of these crimes just triple and double. And these individuals have had to serve time, but they're in a program, a mentoring program like the Next Level Boys Academy, that's changing their lives, that shows them there's a better way. And they don't have to do these things anymore, and that they can take life in their own hands by going out there and learning how to cut grass, get a job, and they're better for it. Their wants and their needs are now known, so they don't have to go after things that they want and taking it from someone else. They can go after the things that they need, work hard for it, and keep working to get the things that they want. This is now a wonderful thing. And here at the gathering spot, they gave us the space, the opportunity to do it, and at the end of it, they're even offering some of these young men jobs. And some of the business community needed to hear that because they can also continue to offer these young men jobs. And that's one thing that's going on here, and that's why we wanted to do it, to show that there's a pathway out of poverty, and there's a pathway out of some of these poor choices that young men make. And right now, we heard from the DA, we heard from the chair, and we talked about solutions. And we're going to keep doing that discussion as we make policies and plans to improve.
All right. It is 1:30, so we are going to get going. Today is Wednesday, January 27, 2021. It's 1:30 PM. This is the regularly scheduled meeting of the Finance Executive Committee. I'm its chairperson, Jennifer I. So, I am going to call the meeting to order and ask Ms. Kempson Wright if he would do a quick roll call.
Yes, Madam Chair. Councilmember Jennifer Ann I.
Here.
Councilmember Howard Shuck. Councilmember Nadine Mosley Archibong. Councilmember Andre Dickenson.
Present.
Councilmember JP Mazzatite.
Here.
Councilmember Joyce M. Shepherd.
Present.
Councilmember Matt Westmoreland.
Here.
Thank you. Madam Chair, you have a call.
Yeah, sure, just here.
All right. Thank you to my committee members for being here today. Ms. Kempson Wright, will you read the remote meeting statement?
Yes. This Finance Executive Committee meeting is being conducted remotely as advertised and as in accordance with the Official Code of Georgia 5014-1. The meeting will be conducted in conformance with Roberts' Rules of Order and the Rules of Council.
I think we've lost Ms. Kempson Wright for a minute.
Oh, I'm sorry. I think you clicked on commute. I did. I apologize. This meeting will be conducted in conformance with Roberts' Rules of Order and the Rules of Council.
I think we've lost Ms. Kempson Wright for a minute.
Oh, I'm sorry. I think you clicked on commute. I did. I apologize. This meeting will be conducted in conformance with Roberts' Rules of Order and the Rules of Council authorized by the City Code. The public may access the meeting via the following conference bridge, toll-free access 877-579-6743, conference ID 831-599-1256, which was noted on the Friday, January 22nd public meeting notice. The public will be also view the meeting on channel 20, citycouncil atlantaga.gov, or the council's YouTube, Facebook, and Twitter pages via the council. All presentations are available on the Atlanta City Council Finance Executive Committee presentation page. The agenda was published and made available on Friday, January 22nd via atlantacityga.iqn2.com. Public comment was accepted between the hours of 4:00 PM and 7:00 PM on yesterday, Tuesday, January 26th. All presentations on the remote council meeting conference bridge are received. Mute your phones and speakers. Additionally, speakers must be acknowledged by the presiding officer prior to speaking. Each council member is requested to open your Outlook email and minimize the screen. Amendments, substitutes, and informational documents have been distributed to committee members. Thank you all in advance for your cooperation.
Thank you, Ms. Kempson Wright. First order of business is we need to adopt our agenda. There are no changes to it, so I will make a motion to adopt it.
Second.
Let's open the vote on the agenda. The vote is open. All right. That was six yeses, zero noes. Our agenda has been adopted. We need to approve our minutes from the last meeting, so I'll make that motion.
Second.
The vote is open. All right. That's six yeses, zero noes. Our minutes have been adopted. I don't know if people have had a chance to review our last year's goals and objectives and the progress we made on them. They're in your package. I don't believe I've gotten any additional goals and objectives submitted, so I think let's give it two more weeks, but ask everybody to review what we did last year. Anything we've accomplished, we can take off unless it's a recurring initiative we want to do again, and send me any new goals and objectives you have. So, we have one comment from the public. Let's do that, and then we'll jump into our presentation.
Pleading to you, committee members, and special greetings to you for the voters of Atlanta, to those entities proceeding that are taking note of the digress of which public comments might be issued or being ignored, and our senior advocates, public policy analysts. Public planning units are allowed not committing reports, and especially no reports dealing with finance. Let's talk finance, UNPUR. Let's talk about the plan to amend the city of the Atlanta Avenue Development, Redevelopment Plan, and particularly the three areas of significance that relate to the Council District Little Neighborhood Blue Book Plan, the Oakland City Fort McPherson LCI, and the Reimagined Green Flyer Plan. Let's talk finance in 2021. And you are on behalf of the citizens of UNPUR, UNPUR 9, Vice Chair Anthony N. Robinson, College Claire, Ricardo Jacobs, Office White, Sherri Williams, and UNPUR 9 cohort and supporters.
That was our only comment for today. We have two presentations, both from the Department of Finance, so we're going to hear our COVID-19 update and then our monthly revenue collection update.
Good afternoon. This is Jared Delos, Director of the Office of Enterprise Risk Management in the Department of Finance. Are you ready, Madam Chair?
I am. Thank you. Go ahead.
All right. Next slide, please. This slide just shows the reporting requirements and our mandate to report to the Atlanta City Council. The next slide, please. This particular slide is a representation of the federal funds that the city of Atlanta has received in response to COVID-19. Primarily, we're reporting on the Federal Aviation Administration grant in terms of the expenditures that have been expended from that grant amount, which was approximately $338 million. And we're also going to report on the United States Department of Treasury, where we received $88.4 million, and we will report on our expenditures that we have submitted for FEMA. Next slide, please. This particular slide is an overview of our CRF obligation and spend breakdown. We received $88.4 million from U.S. Treasury. We have obligated costs of $82 million. Our actual cost at this particular time is $48.9 million, and the available balance is $5.7 million. There is a rule known at the bottom, we actually disregard that, because the current allocations are based on the approval from City Council as of October 2020. This particular slide shows all the programs that have been funded, all of the initiatives that have been undertaken, including the homeless, telework, food delivery, distance learning, public facilities testing, hazardous pay, the consumer grant program, which is the rural assistance program, as well as the small business grant program, PPE, as well as communication, technical assistance, disinfection, and then the miscellaneous costs includes the expenses associated with our consultants, as well as the city's matching share that we will be required to meet for the FEMA 25%. Next slide, please. This particular slide is a breakdown of the Department of Aviation for their FAA spending. If you will recall, we received $338.5 million. As of this report, we have obligated $142.7 million. Our actual costs have been $142.7 million, and the available balance from that grant currently stands at $195.7 million. The bulk of the expenses have been associated with debt, media debt obligations, as well as personnel expenses. Next slide, please. This is just a continuation of the breakdown of the FAA grant with the Department of Aviation, and it shows the total amount been thus far is $142,745,297.72. Next slide, please. We are required to report to the City Council our spending as is related to nonprofit and philanthropic organization. Right now, this is a reflection of what we've spent thus far. Georgia's Own Credit Union provided financial support to employees of the city of Atlanta. Invest Atlanta provided financial support to small businesses impacted by COVID-19. And Invest Atlanta, with the assistance of United Way, also provides financial support to the homeless population. All of these funds were expended in the initial $7 million allocation that we deployed to respond to COVID-19. Next slide, please. We are required to report to the Atlanta City Council of donations received. What you see before you is a breakdown of the donation that we received in FY '20, and also a breakdown of donations that have been received for the first and second quarters of FY '21. Right now, our total donations received is $884,096.54. Below, you will see a breakdown of the departments and the amount that has been received by each department. As we always say, donations are important to the city because as we receive donations, it helps to reduce the amount of actual cash that the city needs to meet in order to meet its 25% matching obligation for FEMA reimbursement purposes. Slides nine, 10, 11, and 12, all of those slides provide the detailed information that's required for donation received by the city of Atlanta and is used by the Office of Ethics to make sure that the city's ethics requirements are being met. Next slide, please. Slide 13 is a breakdown of the expenditures and also a breakdown for showing how those expenditures are currently being funded. Initially, COVID-19 developed, the city of Atlanta deployed approximately $7 million to respond to that. This first section indicates how that broke down, how those funds were deployed. We provided a children's food program, a senior school program. We provide funds for the homeless preparedness, and we provide funds to assist small businesses, and we had the non-departmental, for the hourly wage earners with Georgia's Own. If you move over to the far right-hand side, it will show how those expenses have been broken down and how they're being funded. Of that $7 million right now, $3.9 million is being funded from chairs. We will seek for some of those expenses, $3,782 will be charged to FEMA, and the city will have a matching obligation of $1,260.75. If you will notice in the city funds to be determined, that's a million dollars that was deployed for the homeless preparedness, as well as $1.5 million that went through Georgia's Own. Right now, that money remains as the obligation of the city, and so, that's what's reflected there. Other initial $7 million, $6.4 million has actually been spent, and the breakdown is shown in the funding column as to how that money is being funded, how those expenses are being funded. The next entry is for the shelter option. After the initial $7 million, the city went back and appropriated an additional $1.5 million for shelter expenses. The breakdown that indicates that we intend to submit, well, we have already submitted to FEMA, the request for reimbursement for those expenses. The breakdown is FEMA for $1 million, $1,094,000, and the city's matching share of that is $364,000. For total from that second $1.5 allocation from the trust fund, about $1,458,000 has been spent from that $1.5. The next entry is other expenses. This is a breakdown of all the monies that has been expended by departments for cleaning, for PPE equipment, sanitizing buildings. for cleaning, for PPE equipment, sanitizing buildings. It also includes a representation of the CRF funding programs, such as the rental assistance program, the small business, the homeless initiative, all of those programs that we talked about earlier. Right now, our expenses for that, if you're looking at, in the budget expenses, expenditures column, our expenses for that right now total of $40,096, $40,096,000. The breakdown for that is that we charged $31,880,000 to cares. We will charge $4,923,000 to FEMA and the city's matching obligation for that is $1.6 million. Right now, the total expenditures for this particular entry is $40,096,000. The last entry that we want to talk about is the hazardous pay. The city allocated $15,970,000. As of now, of that $15 million, $13,180, excuse me, $13,184,000 is being charged to cares and $1,727,000 will be requested from FEMA and the city has a matching obligation of $575,000. The FEMA chair that we're talking about right now, the $1.7 million, that represents those employees who were not, who were deemed by city's policy to be eligible for hazardous pay, but were not eligible under care rules to receive eligible pay and are intended to submit that to FEMA for reimbursement purposes. And as you can see, right now, our total expenditures for all of cares obligation, all of FEMA obligation and the amount that has been expended by the city, right now sits at approximately $63 million for expenses thus far. We have filed a request for FEMA reimbursement and it is intended of the city in February to file a follow-up request for reimbursement for hazard expenses that have been incurred since mid-September to current date. That concludes our report and I will entertain any questions if there are any.
Thank you, Mr. Deloche. I want to recognize that Committee Member Natalie Archibon, who's joined us since we did roll call. She was having a technical problem and we didn't turn her down. Anybody have questions for Mr. Deloche about the COVID report? All right, well, thank you for the information and we'll see you next time. And let's move on to our revenue report from Finance.
Good afternoon, this is Felicia Daniels from the Department of Finance. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Excellent. Thank you, Madam Chair. This FY '21 monthly general fund revenue report for December is prepared pursuant to 20-R-4006, which requires that Finance provide an update to the Finance Executive Committee at the second regularly scheduled meeting of each month. And reporting shall contain detailed information regarding collections for each of the general fund revenue streams and how collections compare to budgeted revenue. This presentation begins with a listing of the general fund major revenue category. The report provides the FY '21 adopted budget amounts by major category. The FY '21 adopted general fund budget is $680 million, which includes a $34 million supplement from fund balance. Additionally, a $7.3 million supplement from the committed fund balance was approved via 20-0-1511 to fund the zoning rewrite project and other permitting-related services. Next, a comparison of the FY '21 December projections year-to-date versus the FY '21 December actuals year-to-date represents six months of the FY '21 fiscal year. In total, December year-to-date actuals are $396 million, which are higher than year-to-date projections of $395 million by $1.4 million. December represents the first month of FY '21 in which year-to-date actuals exceed the year-to-date budget. An analysis of the major factors by category for material variances are as follows. The property tax, the property tax variance of $9 million is higher than budget. As noted, the previous month's negative variance is due only to a timing difference between last year's tax deadline and this year's tax deadline. So you are now seeing the revenue smoothing effect mentioned in previous month's reporting as property taxes are collected from Fulton and DeKalb have caught up with their budget. December property tax collections were over $18 million. Historically, for the remaining six months of the fiscal year, the city will collect an additional $13 to $15 million in current and prior year collections from Fulton and DeKalb counties, which will result in the city achieving the total property tax budget of approximately $232 million. Comparatively, through December, through December of 2019, the FY '20 fiscal year, we were at a 96% collection rate. Through December of this current year, we are at a 94% collection rate, which is great news considering that the property tax deadline was one month later. For local option sales tax, it's trending higher than year-to-date projections by $4.1 million. The FY '21 six-month average is approximately $99.2 million per month. This is a bright spot in general fund revenue and underscores a healthy underlying economy despite the challenges of the pandemic. Licenses and permits. This revenue is lower than year-to-date projections by $4.4 million, primarily due to slower alcohol license receipts. The hospitality industry has been heavily impacted by COVID. Businesses are beset with financial challenges with sustaining their operations. Through December, for context, the budget for alcohol license collection was $7.4 million versus actual collection of $1.3 million. And this is what represents the material negative variance that we're witnessing now. For fines and penalties, there's a negative variance of $3.5 million and it's directly related to the previous COVID-induced closure of city courts and lower traffic violations and parking enforcement. Generally, traffic citations represent about 80% of caseloads. The rise in telework options has changed driving patterns, which has reduced the number of citations issued in the city. Additionally, the PTIT diversion programs revenues are lower than budgeted by approximately $814,000 because the pipeline of citations, of course, is lower. Finally, for hotel and motels, the negative variance of $5.8 million is directly related to the depressed demand stemming from COVID-19. The erosion of business convention and tourism activities has reduced demand, occupancy, and thus results in lower room rates, which affects our collections overall. The last two columns presented compare FY '20 December year-to-date actuals versus FY '21 December year-to-date actuals and showing a negative variance of $27 million. However, in obvious, when last year's revenues were not impacted by COVID and are therefore higher than current year, the FY '21 budget includes COVID-related revenue impact, which makes it lower than last year. This is the December revenue report presentation and I yield to your questions. Thank you.
All right, colleagues, does anybody have a question for Finance? All right, seeing none, we're going to move on. Thank you so much for your presentation today and it's good to hear that things are trending in the right direction. We have three first reads, Ms. Kimson Wright, would you mind reading those for me?
Yes, the first is 210071. An ordinance by Finance Executive Committee authorizing the mayor or her designated to enter into a special procurement agreement. SPS 1200521, Professional Development Services, Carl Benson Institute with the University of Georgia Pursuit to Section 2, 1191-1. Article 10 Procurement and Real Estate Code of the City of Atlanta Code of Ordinances on behalf of the Department of Finance for a term of three years and an amount not exceed $120,000.0. All contracted work to be charged to and paid from the funding numbers listed herein and for other purposes. Item number two is 210072. It's an ordinance to amend the fiscal year 2021 general fund budget by anticipating and appropriating funds in the amount of $96,561.10 for receipt of insurance funds related to the December 20th, 2018 plane crash at English Park to allocate funding for the purpose of the Atlanta Fulton County Pre-Arrest Diversion Initiative. And item number three is 210073. The ordinance to amend the fiscal year 2021 general fund budget by anticipating and appropriating for receipt of Federal Emergency Management Agency reimbursement funds related to Georgia disaster COVID-19 and for other purposes.
All right, thank you. So those will all run their course and come back to us. Brings us to item number four, just 210038. An ordinance by Finance Executive Committee authorizing the mayor to enter into a contract with Fulton County to conduct the 2021 City of Atlanta Municipal General Election and any other special elections held in conjunction therewith on November 2nd, 2021 or necessary to conduct a City of Atlanta General runoff election to be held on November 30th, 2021 or such other authorized date to appoint the Fulton County Board of Registration and Elections with the Director of the Fulton County Department of Registration and Elections acting as its agent, as municipal election superintendent for the purpose of conducting said elections as absentee ballot clerk and as municipal registrar and for other purposes. And we are going to hold this one today until it is ready to move on. Ms. Kimson Wright, will we, do we need to amend it or just hold it today?
We'll just be holding it today.
Okay, all right. That is my motion to hold.
Second.
All right, let's open the vote.
Vote is open.
I need to reload it. This is Dickens, this is Yay.
Okay. And Archibon is not coming through. Do you need to vote by voice? I think Councilor Archibon may be having technical issues.
Yes, I'm sorry, yes.
Okay. All right, so this item is favorable. Seven, seven yeses, zero nos to hold in committee. All right, item number five is 210039. An ordinance by Finance Executive Committee authorizing the mayor her designated on behalf of the City of Atlanta to enter into lease agreement with Nakash Five Point LLC for lower Fourth Side Street parking spaces for a term of three years with such agreement to be revenue generating. All such revenues to be deposited in the general fund to waive certain provisions of Section 2, 1547 of the Procurement and Real Estate Code of the City of Atlanta Code of Ordinances and for other reasons and for other purposes. I will make a motion to approve.
Second.
All right, if there are no questions, let's open the vote.
Vote is open.
This is Archibon, yes.
All right, this is favorable, seven yeses, zero nos. Next item, item number six, 210040. An ordinance by Finance Executive Committee authorizing the mayor her designated on behalf of the City of Atlanta to execute a second amendment to a sublease agreement with Parking Company of America Inc., a Georgia corporation, for the purpose of extending the term and modifying the rent for parking spaces at 146 through 150 Peachtree Street, Atlanta, Georgia for use by the Department of City Planning for an additional period of five years. Retroactive. Can the people who are talking put themselves on mute? We can hear you. Commencing retroactively on October 1st, 2020 and ending on September 30th, 2025 at a monthly rent of $3,103.12 with an annual escalation of 3% beginning at the first year of the term waiving Article 10, Section 2-1546 of the Procurement Code of the City of Atlanta Code of Ordinances authorizing the expenditures to be charged to and paid from the fund and accounts that are provided and for other purposes. I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
All right, any questions for the department? If not, let's open the vote.
Vote is open.
Archibon, yes.
All right, this item is favorable, seven yeses, zero nos. I did mean to mention when we were doing our report that the annual report of the Atlanta Sister Cities Commission was provided to us and it was in everybody's packet and that has a nice overview of our participation in Sister Cities programs. So I wanted to make sure committee members were aware that that had been provided to us. All right, item number seven is 210041. An ordinance by Finance Executive Committee authorizing the mayor her designated on behalf of the City of Atlanta to execute a lease agreement with Fulton County for the lease of approximately 5,237 square feet of office space located at J.C. Burdine Neighborhood Service Center, 215 Lakewood Way, Southeast Atlanta, Georgia, 30315 for use of the senior center for a term of three years at a base rental rate of $11 per square foot waiving Section 2-1546 of the Procurement Code of the City of Atlanta Code of Ordinances. Article 10, all amounts to be deposited to and paid from funds for account numbers listed herein and for other purposes. And I believe that there is an amendment in our packet to this one. Yes, it is the, right after our goals and objectives. So I will make a motion to amend the legislation to update the departmental organization number in the account string.
Second on the amendment.
All right, let's open the vote on the amendment.
Vote is open.
All right, so it was seven yeses, zero nos on the amendment. I'll make a motion to adopt as amended.
Second.
Let's open the vote on the paper as amended.
Vote is open.
All right, that's seven yeses, zero nos, favorable on amendment. Item number eight, 10000042. An ordinance by Finance Executive Committee waiving the competitive source election requirements contained in Article 10 Procurement and Real Estate Code of the City of Atlanta Code of Ordinances and authorizing the mayor her designated on behalf of the City of Atlanta to enter into agreements with performers, artists, media outlets and sponsors for the 2021 Atlanta Jazz Festival in Atlanta and allowing the mayor's office of cultural affairs to charge admission fees for select events at the festival and directing that all jazz festival revenues and expenses be deposited and expended from the accounts listed below and for other purposes. Before we, I would love to hear from the department or administration on what the current plans is for the Jazz Festival, what the data is that we're talking about considering our COVID restrictions still in place.
Good afternoon, this is Jahan Ali.
Good afternoon, this is Jahan Ali. Can you all hear me?
Yes.
Perfect. So right now, we do anticipate on having the Atlanta Jazz Festival at some point this year. However, we are monitoring the ongoing developments of COVID nineteen and are prepared to adjust accordingly. However, in order for us to move forward with planning, we do need to start the process of artist selection as well as sponsorship solicitation and securing media. So is there a tentative date that you're talking to performers about?
So right now, the date as it stands is Memorial Day weekend. And so that is the date that we are talking to performers about. However, as I mentioned, we are monitoring those developments and if we should need to adjust, we are prepared to do so.
Okay, but that would be my question is to make sure that all of the contracts, that we're not losing money on this because that seems awfully optimistic to me to have a Jazz Festival Memorial Weekend. So that would be my concern in approving the funding is to make sure that all of the contracts allow us to move it if that's required for a public health situation.
Yes, Madam Chair.
All right, anybody else have questions? Anybody have a motion?
What's more on move approval?
I signed up, I signed up with a question, Madam Chair.
Okay, I'm sorry, I missed that. Mr. Shuck.
Yeah, I'm kind of astounded to think that people think there's a good chance that we'd be able to do this on Memorial Day. None of the trends I'm seeing seem to suggest that. To what extent does that date, you know, rely on information you receive from public health experts?
So as I mentioned, we are in conversations about potentially having to adjust the date. So the conversation has been had about what our potential alternatives could be. We have not confirmed a new date at this time, but we are having those conversations in preparation to adjust. But as I mentioned, in order for us to start the planning process, we have to move forward with those conversations with the artists and sponsorship solicitation as well.
All right, and refresh us, what kind of revenues and expenditures were associated with last year's event?
When you say revenue and expenditures, are you referring to the cost of the festival?
Yeah, what we bring in and what was paid out.
So I do not have that information at this time, but I can get that to you.
Yeah. I would, before I vote, would vote yes to approve this, I really want to make sure that all of the contracts have written in the ability to move the date so that we're not, I'm just, it makes me very anxious to hear that the tentative date is May and the last thing I want to do is, you know, lose money on this. So, I mean, I hear you saying that, yes, you're doing that, but I think it needs to be in the legislation somehow that that's what we're authorizing is to move forward, but all of the contracts have to have us, you know, not losing any money if we change the date. I don't know if anybody from the law department can speak to that today or if we need some time to consider that.
Good afternoon, Chair Ad and Finance Executive Committee, this is Amber Robinson from the, from the law department. I don't think that there would be any problem with an amendment to the legislation to set forth, to add any agreements entered into in accordance with this legislation or as authorized by this legislation must include a provision which would permit the city to alter the date of the event if necessary due to public health orders or determination.
That, I don't know if that's something law can pull together while we're talking about that. Okay, then there are two other councilmembers signed up to speak. I'm gonna do, go to Ms. Shepherd and Mr. Matzakite and if you can quickly write something up that would add that language, I would appreciate that. All right, Councilmember Shepherd.
So I have a couple of questions. Number one is, last year, we canceled the concert because of COVID nineteen. And now we're contemplating it again for this year. But here's my question, from a financial perspective, is this concert that we do every year, is this strictly fundraising or what is the actual expenditure through the city? What is our cost in terms of we as a city, what is our expenditure? And what's the percentage? Have we ever had a report to show the breakdown in terms of how much money was raised, what was the cost to the city, just like we just had the one to break down for COVID nineteen in terms of that or analysis of that? Have we ever done that? So then if we're approving this, I would like to know. And if we did, if we raised any money from last year, is that money still sitting there? And again, what are the expenditures that the city will have? And how much money are we raising? What is the expected cost?
So the festival right now, I apologize.
Can anybody answer that for me?
Yes, so the festival right now is paid for through sponsorship and through admission fees that we charge for concerts within the event and also generated revenue from our vendors. Again, as I mentioned previously, I don't have the expenditures in front of me from last year, obviously the previous years. And then we did pivot last year, obviously due to COVID nineteen. So I can get an expenditure report to share.
Yeah, I just think also that we should begin to look at how the money is coming in for this event, not because I'm saying anything wrong, but I do have questions in terms of the expense of this and we're doing it every year. Just want to know what the expenses are, you know, if we are actually turning the expense as a city and who is donating to us, what is the amount they're donating, how is all of that being looked at, how does that work? And I would say that based on this, I don't know, if we can't get those answers, I'm comfortable with us just going forward unless the amendment is going to be to change the date. Is that what we're talking about, changing the date or looking at it and saying that if it's not going to be made, it will be in maybe later in the fall, but then what happens to that money? So if we collect and then it doesn't happen, what happens to that money? Or is it just a commitment, if it doesn't happen, the money never comes in? I just need to understand that.
Yeah, so. Councilmember Shepherd, my amendment was really to make sure that if we are, if the city's spending money for deposits or payments to performers and then we had to move the date, that the city doesn't lose that money. That's what I was, I share your concerns on this, but that was what my amendment was, was I wasn't really thinking of ticket revenues, I was thinking of making sure that we don't lose payments and deposits to vendors.
But it's not just ticket revenue I'm talking about because theoretically, most of the event is supposed to be free. I thought this is a free event. I don't know if we're having any, y'all need to explain that to me in terms of, we need to ask for a breakdown of that, of how does that work? I know they have sometimes, typically, the Jazz Festival every year has been a free event across, it happens on Memorial Day weekend and it's open to the public as an event in Peachmont Park. I go all the time and it's a great event. But, and I know we do have to pay our artists and all this setup and stuff, but I'm just asking in terms of financial cost, what is that, how does that work? And is it strictly done strictly by donations from other folks? Do we as a city get involved with that anyway? What is our cost? I'm just asking a lot of questions that I just never understood how that works.
And I, I am fairly confident that since I have been on council, that the city has been asked to contribute money towards the cost of it. I completely agree with all of your questions and concerns that I think people might be feeling like they don't have enough information in front of them. Let me, let me get to Mr. Matzakite and then we'll figure out what we're gonna do with this. Thank you.
Madam Chair.
Uh huh.
Are you ready for me? This is Councilmember Matzakite.
Yes.
Okay, great. And I do share the concerns and thoughts that both you and Councilmember Shepherd put forward, so put me in that unreadiness column. But question, you know, a lot of the opening of the city and holding of events is tied to what phase, COVID phase the city is in. Will this event be tied to some COVID phase?
So yes, so as I mentioned, with us right now anticipating having the Jazz Festival, you know, we are monitoring those developments of COVID. And so with that, we are prepared to, as I mentioned previously, move the date if necessary. If the festival is something that we're not able to do as an in-person event, then what that could potentially look like as a virtual experience. But again, the conversations are being had, obviously, because of the situation with COVID and just being prepared as we are monitoring those developments.
So what phase would the city have to be in for it to be an in-person event?
I believe it would be phase five.
Phase five, okay. All right, yeah, that's pretty ambitious to believe that we're gonna be in phase five in May. But, all right, thank you very much, that's my question.
Madam Chair, I got, I got knocked off, but I'm happy to withdraw my motion and I suspect Councilmember Dickens will do the same and we can hold this and talk more about it.
It's astounding to me, like, people want some more information on the finances in the last couple of years in general and that, you know, some further discussion about the date. So I think I'm gonna make a substitute motion to hold and hopefully in the next two weeks we can get additional information to get everybody comfortable.
Second.
All right, let's open the vote.
Madam Chair, I got dropped, but I'm.
Oh, I'm sorry.
This is Shepherd, just like you know, I got dropped, I'm not online anymore right now, but it's yay. Okay.
Madam Chair, the Councilmember Matzakite, same for me, I'm a yay that got dropped from the Elms.
Okay. All right, so that was seven yeses, zero nos to hold in committee. And we can, I think you've heard the concerns, but we can connect even offline on what I think we'll want to see in two weeks to be able to move it forward. Item number nine is twenty one oh zero zero four three. An ordinance by Finance Executive Committee on behalf of the Department of Parks and Recreation authorizing the chief financial officer to amend this fiscal year twenty twenty park impact fee fund budget by transferring remaining balances from and to the accounts listed in exhibit A for the purpose of unrestricted amounts from various projects to be utilized for future projects and for other purposes. And so we need to first bring forward the amendment that is in our packet that, let's see, the amendment, I believe, puts all the numbers in exhibit A. So I'll make a motion to amend.
Second. Vote is open.
Matzakite, yay.
Shepherd, yay.
All right, that is seven yeses, zero nos on the amendment. Does anybody have questions for Parks and Rec? Otherwise, I'll make a motion to approve as amended.
Second.
All right, no questions, let's open the vote.
Vote is open.
Matzakite, yay.
Shepherd, yay.
It is favorable as amended with seven yeses, zero nos. Next item is twenty one oh zero zero four. An ordinance by Finance Executive Committee authorizing the mayor her designated on behalf of the City of Atlanta to execute a second amendment, the lease agreement, to the sublease agreement with parking company of America Inc., a Georgia corporation, for the purpose of extending the term and modifying the rent for parking spaces at one five four through one six six Peachtree Street, together with the unimproved rear portion of the property commonly known as one fifty two Peachtree Street, Atlanta, Georgia, for the use by the Department of City Planning for an additional period of five years commencing retroactively on October first, twenty twenty and ending on September thirtieth, twenty twenty five at a monthly rent of seven thousand eighty one dollars and fifty one cents with an annual escalation of three percent beginning at the third year of the term waiving article ten, section two dash one five four six, the Procurement Code of the City of Atlanta Code of Ordinances authorizing the expenditures to be charged to and paid from the fund and accounts as provided and for other purposes. Another parking paper. I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
Let's open the vote.
Vote is open.
Shepherd, yay.
All right, that is favorable, seven yeses, zero nos. Next item is eleven twenty one oh zero zero four five. An ordinance by Finance Executive Committee authorizing the mayor her designated to execute all documents necessary to donate approximately zero point zero zero six acres of land located at twelve oh three Lee Street, Fire Station fourteen, land site one nineteen and one twenty of District fourteen of Fulton County, Georgia, to the Georgia Department of Transportation for its traffic operations improvement project and for other purposes. Make a motion to approve.
Second.
A separate vote?
Vote is open.
Shepherd, yay.
Yep, Shuck's been kicked off, I vote yay.
All right. All right, that's seven yeses, zero nos. Item's favorable. Brings us to twelve twenty oh zero zero four six. An ordinance by Councilmember Marsh B. Collier Overstreet to amend chapter one fourteen personnel, article four, civil service, division six, recruitment and job applications, section one fourteen dash one eighty nine, physical examinations of the City of Atlanta Code of Ordinances to repeal the requirement prospective employees who are not applying for employment in safety sensitive positions undergo a post-employment offer, physical examination, or a drug test to offer as the commissioner of the Department of Human Resources to establish administrative requirements for post-employment offer, physical examinations, and drug testing applicable to person seeking employment in positions designated as safety sensitive and for other purposes. I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
Second.
Vote is open.
All right, Mr. Matt's Kate. Um, this item's favorable, seven yeses, zero noes. All right, the next, um, I'm going to take the next two together. 2100050, an ordinance by Councilmember Matt Westmoreland, authorizing a donation amount to exceed $2,000 from the Post 2 at Large Carry Forward Account to Grant Park Conservancy to support the restoration and maintenance of the historic Grant Park and for other purposes. And item 14 is 2100051, an ordinance by Councilmember Matt Westmoreland, authorizing a donation amount not to exceed $1,000 from the Post 2 at Large Carry Forward Account to the Kirkwood Neighborhood Organizations, Kirkwood Cares Initiative, and for other purposes.
A motion approved.
All right, I heard a motion by Westmoreland and a second by Shook. Let's open the vote.
Vote is open.
Oh, we're waiting on me. Um, there we go. Those two items are favorable, seven yeses, zero noes. Item number 15, 2100052, an ordinance by Councilmembers Dustin Hill, Carla Smith, Matt Westmoreland, Joyce Shepherd, Michael Julian Bond, and Cleta Winfield to amend Sections 146-26 of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Atlanta so as to provide for an antelaborum tax levy on property located within the Beltline Special Services District and for other purposes. And.
Let's hold.
I believe that, yes, we are going to hold this today. Who, that was Shook or Westmoreland said that?
Westmoreland.
Okay.
Second.
All right, let's open the vote.
Vote is open.
All right, seven yeses, zero noes, held in committee. Mr. Westmoreland, was this, this did not go to CD also?
Yeah, there's three papers and two of them were dual-referred and one of them was only sent to FEC. And we held the other two in DHS tomorrow for the foreseeable future for a lot more conversation.
Okay, all right, so that's what's going on there. Will there be a work session to your knowledge?
There will, um, and six community meetings hosted by the Beltline. I'm trying to finalize the work session date, uh, tentatively February 16th, but I need to check with as many people in the body as possible.
Okay, so more to come on Beltline SSD. Um, we're going to take the next two together, 16 and 17. 16 is 2100053, an ordinance by Councilmember Matt Westmoreland to amend Ordinance 2001489, adopted by the Atlanta City Council on August 3rd, 2020, to change the donation recipient name to the Virginia Highland Civic Association and for other purposes. And 17 is 2100054, an ordinance by Councilmember Jennifer Nye to amend Ordinance 2001490, adopted by the Atlanta City Council on August 3rd, 2020, to change the donation recipient name to the Virginia Highland Civic Association and for other purposes. I'll make a motion to approve both of those.
Second.
Let's open the vote.
Vote is open.
But those two items are favorable, seven yeses, zero noes. Item number 18, 2100057, an ordinance by Councilmember Michael Julian Bond to amend Chapter 2 Administration, Article 10 Procurement and Belistic Code, Division 15 Intergovernmental Relations, Section 2-1604, Cooperative Use of Supplies or Services, to authorize the use of piggyback contracts and for other purposes. Um, I know this is a personal paper, but is anybody from procurement available just to explain, um, what this piggyback contract versus, uh, cooperative purchasing agreement?
All right.
We can hear you now.
There you go. Uh, good afternoon, this is Barton Clark, Chief Procurement Officer. Yes, uh, in a strict, uh, definition, the cooperative agreements are created by multiple, uh, government entities for the focus of a, a, um, of a procurement. But with a piggyback, it's actually, what we're doing is we're piggybacking off of the, a competitive and transparent process by a single, uh, government entity, which we then, uh, will authorize with their authority, of course, uh, the use of the terms. So it's a little bit different, but it's a great way to, uh, to save costs and time.
So you're saying when a cooperative agreement is done, it is done with the intent in the, uh, beginning to be a cooperative. But in this case, it may just be that Cobb County has done the competitive bidding and we say to Cobb, oh, we need to do the exact same thing that you just did. And so can you share the terms of your agreement with us and allow us to do that, even though it wasn't set up as a cooperative to begin with? That.
Brilliant.
The gist of it, okay.
Yes.
Um, anybody have questions for procurement?
Uh, yeah, Shook does. I'm, I'm waiting to, my download to complete again. So I've been through a lot of procurement, um, sort of improvement sessions in, over the last 20 years. I don't remember this having come up before. Was there some change in state law or, or something that allowed this to be a possibility?
No, a- actually, the state law i- is pretty, um, uh, is pretty broad, Councilman Shook. And in fact, we have, uh, utilized, you know, similar methodologies where we've engaged MOUs or other, uh, letters of, of authority from, um, uh, uh, other, uh, government entities. But now we're going to memorialize it within the code, sir.
All right, and then how are we going to, um, be reassured that, you know, the contract terms that we're sort of accustomed to, um, supporting, uh, you know, minority contracting and, and, um, you know, other safeguards? How are we to know that, uh, they're part of this process?
Sure, to be honest, I mean, our, our main objective, of course, is to procure, uh, competitively procure our, our goods and services in-house, sir. But there may be, you know, specific circumstances where there's just an amazing rate from a, uh, from a neighboring jurisdictions that we tap into. Um, the terms, of course, would be reviewed by law and DOP and the user agency. And so they've got to fit, it's got to be essentially an, an exact match of what we need. Because essentially we are piggybacking and so the terms should mirror what we need. If they don't, then that's not an option. And so we'd be forced to, to do a, um, a in-house competitive, uh, procurement. Uh, in, in terms of, you know, our, uh, objective, uh, Councilman Shook, my objective is to try to do as many in-house. Uh, and that's what we're looking at, trying to be a little bit more efficient in, in broadcasting when we're going to need these things. Cost, uh, drive costs down, uh, and to do them in-house. But again, this, this is a, a, an option that we want to make sure we codify at least.
What, what kind of savings, sir, do you think might be had here?
Yeah, in theory, if we did it or they did it, in theory, if we're going to the market, we should get the same price, Councilman, uh, Shook. Uh, but at, at least with the savings of us not having to go through all the resources and the time, uh, to do it. Um, but in the strictest sense, the, the price should be market price, which would, we, would, which would have been arrived at by either us or them.
Yeah, I, I hear all that. I'm never interested in, in saving a dollar and saving tread on, on the tire in terms of staff work and, and time spent. I'm, I'm just, I'm kind of, I hate to use the word cynicism, but I, I'm trying to wonder what it is that one day we may wake up and discover that's bid us that we're not considering now. In other words, I, I would hate for us to discover after the fact that some long-term contract we entered into was deficient in, in, in some way, in terms of our expectations and goals, in terms of, uh, in terms of contracting, if, if that makes any sense. But I'll let you know, thank you.
All right, I do also think that we have, um, um, Councilmember Bond on the phone. So I don't know, Councilmember Bond, you have anything you wanted to add in addition? Um, to our procurement officer, but you're welcome to speak to your paper.
Well, thank you, Madam Chair, just here if there are any questions to make.
Okay, um, Mr. Matt's a kite next in the lineup, and then after Matt's a kite, Mr. Dickens.
Thank you, Chair. I'd, um, I, I can see where this might be, um, a, a really good way if we are going to purchase something that, that is somewhat of a commodity or, um, you, you know, an own service like road repaving or something like that. My question is, and, and if we like the price, then, then we would examine the contract and, and, and use it. Uh, my question is around the IPRO. Would, would the IPRO, uh, evaluation apply to these contracts?
Ooh, that's a great question. Um, arguably, if it's over a million dollars, yes.
Okay, all right, so there is some, uh, uh, that's a safeguard and, and another layer of evaluation that, that would apply to this. Um, so, okay, thank you very much.
All right, Councilmember Dickens.
Yeah, I, uh, have two questions. One, Mr. Matt's a kite just asked, which was IPRO. Um, Mr. Clark, I want you to firm that up to be certain. You said you, you think so, um, over a million. That's when IPRO always sticks in. I just want to make sure that IPRO will, is definitely in there and even if there's language that we need to add to the paper to, you know, lock and opine on whether or not it needs to be added to this. I see the benefit in piggyback, uh, and piggybacking, I'm in favor of it. Um, but the second question was, Mr. Clark, I didn't get a good, firm answer from Mr. Shook's question on DBE. Do, do the DBE requirements and SBE requirements look like the piggybacked agent, uh, organization? Um, their terms of DBE or do they look like our, um, DBE goals? So, um, or, or what we have to, or would the paper come to us and says, you know, we waive our DBE requirements to be consistent with this other group because we're piggybacking? Um, I just want to kind of get a firmer answer on the DBE portion.
Sure, so, uh, to be honest, the, these sort of, uh, piggybacks and commodities are best for, I'm sorry, cooperatives are best for commodity purchases, uh, based upon price. When you leave them over to services, cooperative agreements, we would be, uh, subject to whatever terms that are in the, uh, in the, uh, code of the neighboring agency. So if they do not have, um, you know, the EBO program requirements that we have, uh, then we would not be able to provide it, uh, Councilman Dickens. Uh, that's one of the downsides of, of the cooperatives.
I don't like that downside. So, um, you know, the, the rationale for why we need piggybacking is because we can get some of these contracts done faster and with less, um, go ahead, what were you about to say?
And price, especially if it's a commodity.
If it's a commodity, yes, but I mean, at a certain point, we all should have the, uh, you know, we should be pretty clear on what it costs to do some of our more routine things like street paving, sidewalk work, pipes and these things. We, we should have a standard deviation that's known, uh, at, at any given time as a, as a rate for that. Uh, same thing for, you know, commodities as well. So hopefully you do get a better price, but that would, you know, so, so the, but the goal that I keep hearing about piggybacking, which I'm in favor of this goal, is expediency, um, if DeKalb, Cobb, Gwinnett, Clayton have something going on and we are at the same time trying to have something going on, those contracts can just roll right on into us. Um, or, you know, pricing can be, uh, you know, same or near the same, you know, the same, which is preferred, or timing. Um, but I also don't ever want to give up, uh, the, the EBO program. I think that, um, do you see this, the need for piggybacking as a response to some, uh, and I know this may sound sensitive to you, but some deficiencies that we have in turning out procurement quickly?
No, no, again, this is a, a way to codify, you know, a methodology of, of quickly and, and efficiently, especially when it comes to commodities and pricing, a, a method to procure. As a former director of OCC and, and a former attorney that defended the program for 15 years, I absolutely have a preference for our, our, uh, methods that incorporate our world-renowned EBO and DBE, uh, programs. So again, this is just codifying a, a, another, um, potential method that, uh, a user agency could ask procurement, uh, to utilize. But Councilman Dickens, I think you know that I'm very committed to the, uh, to the use of our, our world-renowned, uh, EBO program.
Yeah, actually I know you are, which is why I wanted to make sure I heard it very clearly from you. Um, because, you know, so I'm kind of wondering if there's, you know, Mr. Bond, I know you're on the call and I know you are completely a supporter of EBO as always. So I, I just want to make sure, you know, I'm either wanting to hold or I'll be abstaining until I can kind of read deeper into what safeguards could go into place to make sure that, you know, three, four, or five years from now, or six cycles from now, council members, we're not talking about this as a pathway to avoid or circumvent or assert the EBO program, um, on things that we just deem difficult to find a qualified minority bidder or, you, you know, some kind of pathway out of digging deeper to make sure that we open these things up to all avenues. I, I'll stop there and let anyone else answer or respond as they wish. Thank you.
Well, just quickly, you know, we share the same love and respect and deference for the EBO program. And as has been explained, you know, this is just adding another, codifying a, a tool in our toolbox. Uh, you know, I've had the, the privilege over my years of service on the city council to, you know, author the updates for the EBO program and remain, uh, ardently married to its principles and goals and would never seek to do anything to undermine or sidestep that or any other aspect of our inclusionary programs. You know, this is simply codifying a, a practice, uh, so that it rests and so there's never a question, uh, with, uh, the opportunity or the, the deed to having done so to acquire, uh, these particular, uh, commodities, uh, you know, at a competitive rate or, or more quickly than our procurement process, uh, might, uh, I'm sorry, that having been, been able to acquire these commodities underneath these specific services. So no, it's not, not an attempt to go around or sidestep EBO. I'm fully committed, uh, to it and of course have built my career on it. And so just want to make sure that there, if there's ever a question or need to, to do this, to pursue the acquisition of such commodities, that it is a part of our code and so there's no question that our procurement department would have the ability, uh, to do so. ability to do so.
Yes, sir. And I also want to add, Councilman Dickens, that, you know, currently with our cooperative provisions, it's the same thing. The EBO program would not be applied to those with our current languaging. Essentially, this is another form of a cooperative agreement.
Thank you for that explanation.
I have also been told that our auditor is on the phone, and she can address the question with regard to IPRO on cooperative agreements. So if Ms. Noble, you're with us and unmuted, you can remind us how the legislation, the IPRO legislation is about to co-op agreements.
Yes, good afternoon. This is Amanda Noble for the auditor. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes. And I did go back and check the legislation. The, we, IPRO does not look at cooperative agreements or emergency authorization. So if the intent was for IPRO to look at co-ops over a million dollars, I think that would have to be added in.
Okay. Well, that's something for us to consider as well. Mr. Masakite, I see you have your button pushed. I don't remember if that was from the last go-around or if you're...
That was from the last go-round, although, you know, I would have a follow-up question to Ms. Noble about, would it be practical for IPRO to apply to these type of piggyback agreements?
Yeah, I think so. There are, IPRO typically reviews to make sure that all the relevant procedures are being followed. And there's different procedures for cooperative agreements about what's required to be in the file, but IPRO could review those. I'm not sure how many are for a million dollars or more. So obviously, that could affect the workload. We'd have to look at that, but IPRO could definitely review them.
Yeah, anytime we're spending over a million dollars for something, it's comforting to know that there's an independent review of that for me. So I would be very much in favor of having IPRO on these type of agreements.
And Ms. Masakite, you know, I'm in total agreement with you. I'm not opposed to that. If it is used for that purpose, that would be something that I would welcome.
Wonderful. All right. Thank you. That's it, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Masakite. So, I don't know if the takeaway to that is that people feel like this legislation needs an amendment, or if we would do that separately on the IPRO legislation. But I'll, if you have a motion or an amendment, just speak up and let me know how you want to proceed.
Madam Chair, this is Councilmember Masakite. I would amend this legislation to specify that IPRO would be conducted on all piggybacks over a million dollars.
Okay. If somebody from law is on, can you just let us know, do we also need to make a change to the IPRO legislation, or will it be sufficient to amend this legislation to require IPRO review? Hello?
We can hear you now.
Hello?
Okay.
Yep.
Yeah.
Oh, hi. So let us take a look at the IPRO legislation. We did recently amend that legislation when we, or at least some of it, when we amended the charter to create the inspector general. But we need to take a look at that to see if we would need to put it there as well. If that is the case, I think that would need to be a separate piece
of legislation rather than here. But of course, this legislation could be amended in order to step forth that that is the intention here, and then a subsequent piece of legislation could be introduced to make that consistency in the IPRO section.
Okay. Thank you. All right. So, Mr. Masakite, you want to make a motion to amend this paper to add a requirement that it go through the IPRO process if the contract amount is over a million dollars?
Yes, Madam Chair.
Okay.
Second.
I heard, okay, second by Shook. So let's open the vote on the amendment.
Vote is open.
All right. Seven yeses, zero noes on the amendment. And then, I'll make a motion to adopt as amended.
Second.
All right. Let's open the vote.
Vote is open.
Seven yeses, zero noes. This item is favorable as amended.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you, members of the committee.
Thank you, members of the committee.
You are welcome. Thank you for, um, calling in, Mr. Bond. Um, item number 19 is 21O058, an ordinance by Councilmember Marcy Collier-Overstreet authorizing the reemployment of City of Atlanta retiree Sergeant Robert W. Bailey by the Mayor's Office of Emergency Preparedness for annual compensation not to exceed $92,185 retroactive to November 12th, 2020 and pursuant to Section 3-505B of the Charter of the City of Atlanta and for other purposes. Um, and I believe on this one that we have an amendment which just updates the account string and the fund string. So I'll make a motion to amend.
Second.
Let's vote on the amendment.
Vote is open.
All right, the amendment with seven yeses, zero noes. Make a motion to approve as amended.
Second.
Open the vote.
Vote is open.
All right, this item is favorable, um, seven yeses, zero noes, um, favorable as amended. Item number 20, 21O0061, an ordinance by Councilmember Carla, Carla Smith to ratify agreement EA dash S dash 1210144 dash A COVID-19 Emergency Welcoming Atlanta Grocery Delivery Services with the Common Market Georgia, Inc., and to authorize the mayor who designate need to execute an agreement, an amendment to the agreement to extend the term of the agreement for one year, retroactively beginning December 31st, 2020 through December 31st, 2021, and add funds at an amount not to exceed $100,000 on behalf of the Mayor's Office of Immigrant Affairs in accordance with Section 2 dash 1163C, Article 10, Procurement and Real Estate Code of the City of Atlanta Code of Ordinances, all contract and work to be charged to and paid from the funds listed and for other purposes. I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
This is Carla. Number 21, hey, number 21 is the same thing. It's just for a different, one is for con, one is for Common Market and the other one is for Concrete Jungle. They're the same thing.
Okay, then I'll read 21 and two. 21O0062, an ordinance by Councilwoman Carla Smith to ratify agreement EA dash S dash 1210144B, COVID-19 Emergency Welcoming Atlanta Grocery Delivery Services with Concrete Jungle, Inc., and authorize the mayor who designate need to execute amendment to the agreement to extend the term of the agreement for one term retroactively beginning December 31st, 2020 through December 31st, 2021, on behalf of the Mayor's Office of Immigrant Affairs in accordance with Section 2 dash 1163C, Article 10, Procurement and Real Estate Code of the City of Atlanta Code of Ordinances, all contract and work to be paid, to be charged to and paid from the funds listed and for other purposes. So we will take 20 and 21 together. The motion by I, and second by Shook. Um, this is a great program that the Office of Immigrant Affairs has been running that's really benefited people living in my district. I'm excited about this paper. Thank you, Carla, for getting this. Um, let's open the vote.
You're welcome and thank you for not making me talk.
All right, these two items are both, um, favorable, seven yeses, zero noes. We are done with our ordinances, moving on to Section K, our resolution. Item 22, 21R3042, a resolution by Finance Executive Committee authorized the mayor who designate need to execute amendment number one of the Cooperative Procurement Agreement, CPS 1200570, Uwork.com, Doing Business as Co-Vendus on Call, IT Professional Services with Uwork.com, DVA Co-Vendus, to add the Atlanta Police Department, E911. The Department of Public Works, solid waste from the Atlanta Department of Transportation, renewed T-Spot, the Department of Watershed Management and the Department of Atlanta Information Management as additional users, add funding in amount not to exceed $1,644,000, all contract and work to be charged to and paid from the fund, department, organization, and account numbers listed herein and for other purposes. And there is an amendment, um, which we need to do to correct the funding accounts and amounts, so make a motion to amend.
Second.
Let's open the vote on the amendment.
Vote is open.
All right, seven yeses, zero noes on the amendment. Make a motion to approve as amended.
Second.
All right, let's open the vote.
Vote is open.
All right, that is favorable as amended, seven yeses, zero noes. Um, all right, taking us to our dual referred, most of which have stayed in their first committees, uh, but when we get down to 27, 21O0020, an ordinance by Councilor JP Masekite, Michael Julian Bond, and Dustin Hillis, is substituted by Public Safety and Legal Administration Committee directing the Chief Financial Officer to take what action shall be necessary to ensure that a minimum of 33% of the net revenue collected and remitted to the City of Atlanta as a result of school zone camera enforcement up to a maximum of $2,500,000 shall be utilized to fund the purchase and maintenance of cameras and license plate readers worldwide for the Operation Shield Video Surveillance Program and a minimum of 33% of the net revenue collected and remitted to the City of Atlanta as a result of these school zone speed camera enforcement up to a maximum of $2,500,000 shall be utilized to fund the construction or improvement of the city's public safety training center and programs and for other purposes. And this came out of, um, public safety, favorable on substitute is my understanding.
That's correct.
Okay. What is the substitute?
Uh, the substitute was a amendment by Ms. Smith to add, uh, pedestrians in the areas where schools are, this would take some of that funding for pedestrian, uh, walkways and things around the school also.
Okay.
And in pedestrian walkways and things like that, it's a part of the funding around the school area.
Okay. Was that Mr. Shook who?
Yes.
Um, made a motion?
Second, Masekite.
All right, let's open the vote.
Vote is open.
All right, this item favorable, seven yeses, zero noes. Um, let's see. Is, that might be the last of it. Let me just see, there's nothing on, um... Just, so right, are we ready to do 40? The watershed paper, watershed refund?
Yes, we are.
Okay. Um, so, um, this one has been held, but we're ready to fill in the amount. So we need to bring forward, well, it's item 40, it's 20R4696, a resolution by Councilor Jennifer Knight, authorizes chief financial officer to refund customers for overpayments to water and spare accounts in amount of blank, all funds to be charged to and paid from, fund department, organization, account number 5051, water and wastewater revenue fund 00001, balance sheet default 1226009, refund payable and for other purposes. And we have a substitute that is going to add in the amount is $50,592.83. So I'll make a motion to bring forward the substitute.
Second.
Let's open the vote on that. And the substitute also attached the exhibit of refunds being made. All right, that was seven yeses, zero noes to bring forward the substitute. I'll make a motion to approve on substitute.
Second.
Let's open the vote. All right, this item... I think it's done. Okay, seven yeses, zero noes, favorable on substitute. Um, item number 41 is 20R4756, a resolution by Finance Executive Committee authorized the mayor designate need enter to agreement FC blank with Gordon Huser and Partners, Inc., to create and construct the Atlanta Children's Eternal Flame Memorial at the northeast corner outside of City Hall is authorized by the Chief Procurement Officer in accordance with Section 2 dash 1191.1 of the Procurement Code, Section 4679 of the City of Atlanta Code of Ordinances and the Public Art Master Plan, approved resubmit to ordinance number 100995 at an amount not to exceed $280,000.0. All payments to be charged to and paid from the Fund Department Organization account listed herein and for other purposes. And we have a substitute in the packet that, um... Let me see, what's the substitute? Um, does... This, oh, I think it adds the agreement and the contract number is what the substitute, um, does. So I will make a motion to bring forward the substitute.
Second.
All right, let's vote on the substitute. All right, that's seven yeses, zero noes. The substitute is the fourth. I'll make a motion to approve on substitute.
Second.
Let's open the vote. All right, seven yeses, zero noes, favorable on substitute. If Mr. Witherspoon is on the line, I'm just sort of curious what the timing's going to be of, um, getting the art installed.
Good afternoon. My name is Robert Witherspoon. Can you hear me?
I can.
Thank you. Uh, the, the timeline is approximately one year from the time we go on, under contract. Um, we believe that we may be able to do it, uh, within, uh, eight months, um, of once the contract is, uh, agreement is signed. And so it's, uh, it's definitely planned to be finished this year.
Okay, that's great. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Yep. All right, I think we are all the way down to item number 48. Um, it's 21O0028, an ordinance by Public Safety and Legal Administration Committee authorized the mayor who designate need in accordance with Section 2 dash 1163C, Article 10, Procurement and Real Estate Code to ratify contract numbers, FC 8729, annual maintenance with West Net, Inc., and services provided during renewal number one from January 31, 2018 through January 30th, 2019, and renewal number two from January 31, 2019 through January 30th, 2020, and exercise renewal number three for a term of one year to become retroactively effective January 31st, 2020 through January 30th, 2021, in amount not to exceed $33,519.14 on behalf of the Atlanta Fire Rescue Department for the purpose of providing maintenance to the city's fire station alerting system, all costs to be paid from the account listed herein and for other purposes. Um, and this was sent to us by Public Safety, guessing because we're waiving some of the procurement codes. Um, so I'll make a, is that right, Councilmember Shepherd?
That's correct.
Okay. Um, I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
All right, let's open the vote.
Vote is open.
This item favorable, seven yeses, zero noes. And that is the end of our legislative items. Um, if, um, nobody has anything else, I would just say, um, please remember to, um, get me any thoughts on goals and objectives so we can finalize that in two weeks and we'll try to get our questions answered on the Jazz Festival so we can deal with that in two weeks' time also. Um, so thank you for being here with us today and I will, um, call the meeting adjourned. Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you.